Call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Tenson.
Here.
Fines.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Hockback.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Inkstrom.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
No changes this evening. To approve. Second, call the roll.
Tenson.
Yes.
Fines.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hockback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Yeah, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, a presentation on housing needs assessment.
So, good evening, council and guests that are joining us. It's my pleasure to introduce Lucas Young, who's with the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance, an organization that the city of Boone belongs to for planning services. And he is going to provide a recap of the housing needs assessment. So, you're the first folks that are gonna see the results of the survey. We contacted with the city to do the survey. I highlight that Boone Grove and Alliant Energy are also contributors to the survey. So, the Boone Grove Board of Directors will have time to see the results and hear the information. You're gonna hear it tonight on September 12th. And then after that point in time, we'll probably make the survey more broadly available. But I believe there's copies of the executive summaries going around now, and I'll turn it over to Lucas.
As Brenda said, I'm Lucas Young with Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance. We were hired back in, I think it was in April, you guys signed a contract with Mid-Pub to execute a housing needs assessment. Tonight, I just wanna give you an overview. You guys are seeing the document in front of you tonight, but I'm gonna go over some of the important items within it. If you wanna go to the next slide. Just a little bit of background. As Brenda indicated, this is kind of a partnership to complete this document. But we worked with, we gathered information, as it says there on screen, from the assessor, city staff, Senate Espiro, the HUD, public and urban development, and also surveyed some residents. The intent of the housing needs assessment, this document to be a guide going forward for both you as leaders and stakeholders, but also for those in the economic development realm to market to potential developers. So if you're gonna go to the next slide. Generally speaking, housing is important. I think what is sometimes overlooked is that housing is very much an integral part to other parts of your life and other parts of people's lives. Everything from your mental health, physical health, obviously, your security, as well as your financial security, your ability to eat more. Everyone needs a place to live. And everyone needs that stability and needs affordable housing, and able to have that stability. And I'll mention later on here, there are some challenges within Boone. So, I just wanna point out that stability is important, and there is a need for affordable housing. One thing I wanna comment on affordable housing is that every income level needs affordable housing. So, it's not just talking about the lower end of the spectrum. The higher end of the spectrum also needs units that are affordable to them. And the target is thirty percent of your household income should be dedicated towards housing. So, once you go over that thirty percent threshold, you begin to enter a part of, it becomes challenging for that household to meet, make ends meet. And so, once you've exceeded that thirty percent, it becomes a real challenge. So, I just wanna point out there, that last bullet point, need to ensure that there's a variety of housing options, not just price points, but also types of housing, because everybody needs something different based on their situation. Next slide. Just some, just some comments on Boone demographics. Boone's population has been unusually consistent over the last hundred years. In fact, I pulled out some, some numbers there. It's, I, I don't know that I've ever seen anything quite like it before. Twenty twenty, you had twelve thousand four hundred and sixty people, and a hundred years ago, you had twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-one people. So, I wanted to point out, just, I, I pulled some other communities that have a similar proximity to the Des Moines Metro, similar prox, or similar aspects that they're a county seat town, or similar in size to a county seat town. In the case of Powell, they're not the county seats, but the others are all county seats. So, since nineteen ninety specifically, Boone has grown at about a half percent. And the other communities that we're comparing there to, Nevada has grown by more than fifteen percent, Newton by more than six percent. Even with the loss of Maytag, they've grown. Fella has grown by more than twelve percent. And Indianola, a little bit different scenario, but they've grown by thirty-nine percent. In the, in regards to demographics there, just wanna point out that incomes are less than those median averages across, for the state. So that is something to be aware of. That your, your audience is just our, our, there to meet the averages across, the median across the state. And in that regard, in the next slide here, talking about employment. You know, where people work is often tied to where people live. And Boone is a great spot to be able to market itself as a place to live, if you don't work in it. In the case of Boone, you have, you have big employment centers like Ames nearby, and you have very many little drives to Des Moines for those who wish to, you know, commute for something different. But in the case of, of workers and where they're working, you have more people that work in town. They live out of town, live in town, but work in town. Then you have people that leave town to work. So, that is a side that you have, you know, approximately forty-four hundred working in town, and only four thousand seventy-five leaving town. That is, that is a good thing. On the next slide, this is specific to units in town and where conditions are. And when I talk about units, I'm talking about any type of house. This isn't just single family, but this is also rentals. This is multifamily units, this is apartment buildings. But the bulk of your existing units are occupied, and just over one percent of owner-occupied structures are vacant. So, there is a need on that occupied side as far as additional units for, you know, for those single-family, single-unit structures. There's seventy-seven percent of units are one-unit detached structures, your single-family. So, the bulk of your units are single-family homes. Seventy-five percent of owner-occupied, excuse me, seventy-five percent of occupied units are owner-occupied, and twenty-five percent are renter-occupied, which is a good mix. Median value, again, bear, bad news here again. Median value of owner-occupied units, according to the American community survey that the Census put out, the median value in Boone is a hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred dollars for those owner-occupied units. In comparison to Boone County, Rockland County, you're looking at a hundred and fifty-one thousand for that same median value. And across Iowa, you're looking at a hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred. Now, the ACS estimates a lot of their data and pulls from multiple data sources and, and their actual survey that they do. But the next line is a little bit of a contrast to that. So that, that is a little bit brighter look, outlook, but I am going to come back to that lower value here in a minute. The median residential value, according to the assessor, for units across the city of Boone, you're looking at just over a hundred and fifty-four thousand, or just under a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And the median year of construction, according to the assessor, is nineteen twenty-two. So, you have an old housing stock, and which is on the next page, we'll get to a little bit of comparison there. But I just wanna point out that there's a need, there's a need for units, especially your owner-occupied units. And here, jumping in then to a little bit of hard, hard to read from further away, so I'll try to watch through this a little bit. On the left side of your screen, you have the year homes were built in Boone, and this is information from the assessor. So, these are all the units that, that the assessor has identified it as, and given them a year of construction. So, we have on the far left, just a couple of units that are from the decade of the eighteen forties, all the way up to the twenty twenties. So, looking at this, the, the bulk of your units are, a lot of the units there were built in the nineteen hundreds. But also, when you average this out, or, or kinda group these together, you have almost twenty-four hundred units that were built more than a hundred years ago. And I think there's, I don't have a, I guess I didn't write that number down, but that's a, that's a significant number of your, of your units in town. And on the right side, you have the median and average value of homes by decade of construction. So, you're looking at assessor value, for all, assessor values for the houses that are from the left graph. Here on the right, we're, we've plotted those averages, about the average and the median value of each decade. Looking at this, your older housing stock is valued at less, and you're getting less in taxes from these older homes. You can see that the newer stuff is assessed higher, and you're, you're ultimately getting additional taxes from those, from those newer units. In this regard, I wanna point out that the city has done a good job on removal of older structures, dilapidated structures, nuisance properties, and continues, continued efforts to remove those structures will be important. Equally as important is, I know the city's been working with Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund to, with their major home repair grant program, and that owner-occupied repair program will continue to help the households that are, that have these older units that need repairs and need attention. But one thing I wanna point out on the left graph is the bright spot of the twenty twenties. Almost, you've almost gotten, in three years, you've almost reached what was built in the previous decade. So, as far as construction goes, you're on, you're on a good track right now, as far as construction of units are concerned. The next page is impossible to read, but I, I wanna give you an overview of what you're looking at, before we look at the slides, which are the Boone Day portions that we spent. So, what you have here is the whiter areas are the lower-valued units, the darker, the orange, the higher the value of the units. So, generally speaking, on this, in this, looking at this map, you can see that the, the areas along the periphery, especially to the south, and then there's some on the northeast where you have the darker orange, those are units that have been built more recently. And then if we go to the next slide, what we're looking at here is just the northern portion of Boone. This is north of the railroad tracks. And the white-looking color are your lower-valued units. The darker, like I said, the darker the orange, or the intensity of the orange, the higher the value. There isn't one area that is needing attention or anything, but I just wanna point out that you have, you have, you know, those units scattered throughout. You wanna go to the next one? This is west side of town, West Boone. The railroad tracks are generally there on the north side. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the southern area here, where you have newer development, is darker and higher value. But here, you do see some more, more white as far as the areas that are valued at, at a lower amount, according to the assessor. You wanna go to the next one, that's the third area I've zoomed in. So, this is south of the railroad tracks and east of that previous one. And again, we're talking about the same thing. Property value, according to the assessor, your, your orange is your, your higher-valued units. There, there are a couple of spots on this one that I, I, that are, that are a lot of consistent white, that are a lot of units, but again, it's very sporadic. Going to the next page. Okay, as I mentioned earlier about that affordability component, so, there's a metric from the Census, they actually compiled one. But that they, they calculate the amount of households that are cost-burdened. So, earlier I mentioned that thirty percent, that you wanna be spending less than thirty percent of your income on your housing. So, this is actually that calculation of the unit, of the households that are over that cost burden. So, one in five Boone households are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. According to ten of your households in town are, are having cost burden. More specifically, if we look just on the renter side, one in three renter households or housing cost burden is spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. It's actually thirty-four percent of the renters that are doing that. One thing I wanna point out in that regard, I know you guys have been doing some work in the, in the, you know, tax credit properties, and adding those subsidized units will be, continue to add benefit to these, those folks that are housing cost-burdened and providing additional options for them. And I think, you know, when Brenda's looking for developers to do projects, you know, they can point to this and say this will be a successful project in Boone, because there is a need for it. So, next slide. Again, I know this is a lot of information, but I've highlighted the portions that are important here. And this is again, similar information as to the last page. This is talking about specific income ranges versus what they could potentially afford. And basically, the low end of the spectrum and the high end of the spectrum as far as incomes are concerned, there's, there's a shortage of units that are affordable to those households. So, people making less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year, there are a shortage of three hundred and sixty units for people in that, that would be in that price range. And one thing I wanna point out is, those folks can't just go out and build something new, adding units in that, in that price range for those people who are on that fixed income. Again, it's going to be, you know, those, those tax credit projects, those subsidized-type projects. And it's, it's going to, it's gonna take a unique scenario to be able to add all, to add that, those units. But when those opportunities present themselves, there is, there is a need. On the other end of the spectrum, there's a shortage of units for people making more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, and this math would show that there's a shortage of about five hundred and twenty-three units for those households. So, those households are ultimately buying something that's either less expensive, using their, what I like to call their bargain hunting mentality. They can go, they can afford anything in the, that's available on the market, and so they can go buy something that's either less expensive and do rehab, or they can go out and build their own house if need be. But, you know, if they're gonna go out and build their own house, they also have a place to be able to build that in town. And that's, and that's noted within the document. But just the, I, I, I mentioned this already, but you know, those tax credit projects and state or federal-funded housing programs, you know, will help those making less than the twenty-five thousand. And then, you know, those households making a hundred thousand, they have the flexibility to, you know, do what they need, but also need to have those building lots available in town. And that, that population also has the, like I said, the freedom to purchase whatever it is that's available that they want. So, they have that flexibility. The last page here is talking about what is, what's actually needed if we look at how we wanna grow. When looking on this project, I was talking, you know, about what options, or what the, what the growth was, what the goals were. And we pointed out that there's a goal for a population growth to four thousand. And technically, what this is showing is if, if you were to meet your goal of fourteen thousand, as far as population is concerned, you're gonna need a thousand units. And this is by twenty thirty. So, I'll just run down this little table. So, the top row, well, yeah, let's go to this first column, you have your twenty-twenty figure. So, currently, the twelve thousand four hundred and sixty people. And if you use the average household size of two-point-four-six people, that puts us at a need of five thousand five hundred and sixty-nine units in town. And if we then go to twenty-thirty and say we're gonna have fourteen thousand people, and we're gonna have an average household size of two-point-two-five people, and that puts us at sixty-two hundred units. And then estimated vacancy rate of three hundred and eleven units. So, those added together, we would need sixty-five hundred and thirty-three units. But the city has been active in removal of homes and dilapidated structures. So, that's a removal of forty. So, that adds another forty units needed. So, the sum of units needed would be sixty-five hundred and seventy-three. Take off what we already have at fifty-five, sixty-nine, that leaves us a balance and a need of a thousand units by twenty thirty. So, and I don't, I didn't put this one up here, but even if you don't consider that growth to fourteen thousand, you just look at something similar to what you guys have been doing, kind of bouncing around, around the same figure, you're still gonna need four hundred units by twenty thirty. So, no matter what, you need more units. But if you're intending to grow, and I know that there's a lot of people out there working, working hard to do that, you're gonna need a thousand additional units. So, I went through that relatively quickly. If you happen to answer any questions, I have a document here in front of me, and I can hardly consider anything. But if you happen to answer any questions or feedback.
Does this study take into account the current development housing projects we have?
No, so, based on, if the assessor hasn't had it, those numbers, I didn't add those numbers in.
So, some of those would look a little better on the need, because we are putting in.
And I, and in the document, I address that, you know, there is, there have been projects in this realm that are helping to address these, but, you know.
This data is based on what's currently out there. From doing this study, do you have any, just a couple of surprising things that jump out or recommendations from the data that you go, this is really what you need to be aware of?
The age of your housing is, I would say alarming. I mean,
Is that what you said, you hadn't seen that before, or was that?
No, that was your, that was your, that was your consistent population, almost, not changing. I don't know.
We haven't seen before here.
No, you're, the age of your housing stock is, is alarming. I mean, you know, if your median year of construction, I think, was nineteen twenty-two, that's the, that means half, half of them are older than nineteen twenty-two, and half of them are newer. I mean, that means, just the, just the upkeep in an older house, the, the needs of an older house, the expenses stuff, you know, the cost to maintain that house, there's, there's a lot involved with.
You, you're maybe not seeing the charm in that? I'm, I'm teasing.
It's charming, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm, I'm, yes, I understand.
When they go through and they count the number of renter, available renter occupied, do, do they take into account short-term rentals like Airbnb's? How do they factor that in?
That's, that's a great question. That's, I, I don't know that I have the answer for that.
I know in a lot of areas, they have a lot of short-term rentals that are kind of artificially.
So, the, the one thing that, and I didn't put this up there, but your, the percentage of rental, the vacancy in rental unit with people hiring, I think it's like, I think it's closer to ten percent or something like that. I don't, I don't think that that's probably necessarily true for some of those reasons. And just talking with people like, you know, it's empty.
It's not probably bad as in a lot of other cities.
That might be where it's reflected, is sure.
Other questions?
I have a question for Brenda, how do we achieve these goals?
How do I what?
How do we achieve these goals?
So, you know, I think first and foremost, understanding the importance of population growth. I mean, I think that, I know that there's been a lot of discussions with the council about that, but, but that's where, I mean, I would challenge each one of us that will be sitting here in twenty thirty. But you think about it, it's not really that many people. And if we're working the adding additional housing, and we're also working the job side of it, and I think, I'm confident we can get there. But, but to me, that, that, again, jumped right out at me, that we have to be adding people to the population. You know, the, the hot, the, the, the polar ends of what we have to do. So, we got to add more units that can, can attract stuff on the higher end. Which is like Lucas said, people that are above a hundred thousand dollars a year, the only thing that's doing is that they're buying stuff that people that are at lower incomes can buy. So, we have to be worrying about that, those higher-end options as well. And the study will be helpful to that. So, if you talk to developers, there's just not enough experience here to say, well, will, will a house sell? And, and there just hasn't been enough recent activity. This points to why we need that higher-end stuff. So, and I think it validates the decisions the council made on, on the project up north in Alice's Place. But there's, there's room for some other programs there, too. I mean, there's still three hundred people that are spending more. I mean, that cost-burden number, one out of three is astonishing. So, I think if we worry about the, the two ends, the stuff in the middle takes care of itself. And so I think when Boone Grove hears the results, I, I think that'll be my, my message to them as well. So, you know, Katie, is the good thing about Katie, anybody can go in there. So, is it gonna maybe be a good target for somebody making twenty-five thousand or less? Can you get a one-bedroom there? Those numbers will work, that, that equation will work, but certainly, it'll help us with some of that higher-end rental when they have two and three-bedroom stuff. The Ringgold project will be perfect, that'll help some of that, that higher-end stuff. But, you know, I, I, it tells me again that the owner-occupied program that we, we've been, we're about halfway done with folks that we've approved for that program. And I, I think we need to be pitching back to Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund that we need those funds because of the age of the housing stock. It's gonna be hard to say no to this, is another question.
Absolutely.
So, I think those are things that I think we've gotta, and, you know, maybe we need some sort of a rental assistance, or we need to be talking to our human service providers about, these are numbers. What, maybe we need to do a better job of, what are there for options for people when they need rental assistance? And maybe we put a housing resource tab on your website, or something to get folks that need that, that are cost-burdened, to some of those services. So, I just kinda saw the results last week, so, those are some of my initial thoughts, you know.
Well, I know we talked a lot about population growth and new people moving in, but there are a lot of people that are changing their position and their housing situation that need to switch from owner-occupied to rental, and they're having a really hard time as well.
And their most affordable option is to stay where they're at, and that house might be a nineteen oh-one house. There's, it is, so we gotta, gotta figure out how that helps excitement. So, certainly, both ends of the spectrum.
Yes, sir.
I would tend to be over the hill, the downspare way. A lot of open fields to the east. Maybe if we could draw some big citizens to build out there. The other, the, the, come to me. Get that print that's big time. Maybe get, draw, draw some pictures, Boone, Boone will boom. There'd be a lot of housing built, you'd see a lot of changes, like I've already experienced. If you get yourself a town, you think that the town, the town boom. Beautiful. But that's the most my life. We need to get some community to throw down and stay out, if you get, and the point of view. If you, I went over to Jones the other day, that town is beautiful. The buildings are beautiful, booming. You know that happens? Boone needs to stay here after here, day after day.
I'll just say a quick response, we are working on becoming a Main Street community. I'll just say a quick response. We are working on becoming a Main Street community. And that's what Jefferson is, and that's what has helped them uh do so much of their redevelopment downtown. So it's a process and we're in the, we're really looking at becoming one of those. So we'll get a lot of resources and help if we do that.
Well, and even beyond that, we have even beyond that, we have a lot of business owners that are really doing amazing things with their properties right now. And you can walk downtown and you can see that. I want to acknowledge that.
Yes.
I'm Holly Larson. I have a question. Um does the economic development work on bringing developers into our community? I mean, there's a waiting list of regents, forty-some people who could afford a nicer place to live if there were units available. If we could bring in a couple more units, like Regency, that maybe a little bit of upper income retirement people could afford, it would free up some single-unit housing. Um so does the economic development work on bringing developers to our community?
I can, I can tell you as the chair that we constantly work on that. We, we constantly reach out to developers to come in and, and develop new property.
Specifically though, does the economy, I mean, we spend a lot of money for economic development for our community. Does that committee actually work on bringing developers here?
So I'll, I'll, I'll talk right to that. Okay, so I, I, I need to. So um I, I think Bill and Terry will attest, the catering developers came because I delivered catering to the city. They introduced you to that. That's gonna bring a hundred and twenty units of rental options, all with a garage and all with a front door option that will can rent to anybody. They're gonna start their project here in about two months. Uh we've got a little bit more work to do with the city, but we're trending really high. That's a hundred and twenty units. Probably the largest single housing project Boone has ever seen. And that was a result of our marketing efforts to attract a housing developer. Uh we've uh supported eight units of rental that'll start within the next two or three weeks. On Ringgold, they just received workforce housing tax credit. There are gonna be four bedroom units or three bedroom units, two bath units with a whole garage underneath, four beds. Uh charging for folks that want to get out of their house, uh and want to have a larger house to be able to live to. Um so those are two things that are well on their way to happening. So well over a hundred and thirty units in the next probably twelve months. Okay? And then we're working with another developer that is looking at twenty-four units of rental. And then we have some other single-family projects as well. But it's something I'd say safely that I work on every day. And uh it's, you gotta have the right infrastructure, you gotta have the right uh uh amount of land available. Yeah, and that's sometimes the biggest struggle, no matter where you're at. But um and the council uh is a relates to projects that are just a little ways for being completed. That, that was action on the council agenda to approve the development agreements that needed to be in place as a partnership. So um I would say, um
And then we.
I worked across two counties and there is no other community putting a land that's twelve miles that direction that has this much housing in the pipeline. So the, the numbers.
And then add the LMI project too at twenty.
Yeah, and add the twenty second land project, which we did not work on. We've been supportive of it, but it's not.
And I think that, that lends itself to a more, a little bit more of a direct answer to your question because that stemmed out of a successful project with Alice Place. We had a, a relationship with that developer who knew the area and knew, you know, what they were getting into and, and what things are like here. And then they were able to come back with another project. And so building those relationships with successful developments is a good thing.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh update on trees downtown, downtown tree committee.
I'll dump it if you need anything.
Good. So we, as part of the downtown committee, uh they have selected the trees. We're planting throughout the areas downtown, the open, the open grates as well as green space. Um and so I think, cause today we wanted to talk a little bit about the green space and just make sure that that is all okay on your guys and uh we have two trees being planned for being, being planted in there. Uh one of them would be to the left of the stage and that would be uh a black gum tree. So it's going to be something that's at what it's supposed to be of maturity is gonna be twenty-five to thirty feet tall, fifteen to twenty feet wide. So uh we have about fifteen to twenty feet of, of green space, of, of grass there currently uh to the left of that stage. And so it should fit in there nicely without needing to be incredibly uh aged. Um and that will provide some really nice evening shade to that grass area without blocking the view of the stage um from most directions. As soon as the tree starts to get a little bit taller, we can prune it to, to have those lower branches be raised up so that you can see underneath it from the sidewalk um onto the stage uh while still casting shade across the, the green space for people seeing there uh for events or, or various different things. Uh the other tree would be, you can see off at the next to the porta potty, kind of somewhat camouflaging porta potty, but it's gonna be uh but go to dogwood. So uh max out at twelve, fifteen feet tall. Um the, you can see the kind of the crack on the building um facade there, and that's about a twelve feet tall. So it's kind of somewhere in that range is where it's um supposed to be height, so not a very tall tree. Flowers in the spring, doesn't create a whole lot of mess. It can spread out wide, but it's very easily managed as far as uh some really minor pruning to keep it under control. So it's not spreading uh out into the sidewalks in either of the three directions that it's going to be by. So um a fairly decent uh not very next year selection. Um they tend to have some kind of layers, so they're, they're not a real thick dense tree either. Um and so they, they have kind of a neat ornamental appearance. Those are the trees that were selected um in, in those public spaces. So.
That's the only tree that I have. A little bit of a concern there, that wall is styrofoam with stucco covering. So it's pretty delicate. It can't take much abuse. So if the wind blows and limbs blow up against that wall, it's gonna damage it. So it's not, I mean, and that wall's not ours.
Right, no.
Yeah, that, that was my only concern with that tree there.
Sure. It's a valid concern. Um so you think no tree should go in that, in that space? Would be my question.
It'd be nice to see something there, but.
It would be nice.
Maybe, maybe, maybe concrete would be your best option there. So.
Some sort of a tall planter or something.
Yeah, the, the trees. Yeah, shrubs sometime, but I. The, the tree.
Those kinds of spaces when you got the fence that surrounds it, uh if you have a bunch of tents coming out from the base, it's gonna collect a lot of trash. Would be my only concern.
We were just really careful when we planted the trees along that wall that they weren't trees that would spread out. You know, and we had, we wanted to keep a distance with that wall in case they had to do maintenance on it, that type of stuff. That's the only concern I had.
Um so involvement from the city would need to be watering during the fall time from planting, so planting, the plants plant the weekend of September eighth, uh seventh. Uh I think we're gonna plant on eighteenth, which is the eighth day with the rain date to the twentieth, which is uh later on. And so six days later. So um from that point on, we'd be watering until approximately mid-November. Twice a week would be great. Um and then, and then come springtime, again, depends on the rain, um but twice a week again in the springtime. I know we have dedicated personal waters uh throughout the summer time from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So potentially they could be included during that point. Um but that's, that was what we were, we were told.
Have a rain date. September eighteenth is planting day, right? And we were thinking. Okay, which was the twentieth? Okay. So um we've cleared that with city on planting and being able to work on the eighteenth.
As far as getting the roads blocked off?
Yeah.
I don't think we have.
Okay. We can get her, get it done.
And I think during all these discussions, I don't know if we ever ask staff or at Public Works what they felt about all this and what impact it would have on your schedule and workload and stuff downtown.
We voting on this tonight? I thought this was just an update.
No, I don't think we are. Just, yeah.
So you're asking permission to plant? I just, I think the council would have decided.
Well, if they're gonna plant on the seventeenth, is that gonna be on council's agenda for the sixth? The sixth?
I'm just asking, I don't know.
I didn't know if we needed permission. I, we're going through our proposal of how it was gonna get done. Do we need? Tell me if we need permission on planting, uh so that it's kind of liability or whatever is, is involved, taken care of.
And who's, who's paying for this?
We are trying to fundraise the, the money for it. It's about a twenty-five thousand dollar project.
For two trees?
Oh no, there's more than two trees. Those would be good trees.
In total, uh you know, much the empty spaces.
And that's, that's trees and then also grates that go around them. So there's, there's a cost there. And we haven't decided and whether there's any input here. We've looked at um if you've been in other communities, the plastic grates that they come in two sides and they fit around, or the actual metal grates. And there's pros and cons for each type. Um so we, we haven't decided on that, but that is also a major cost in this.
So in this one, are they gonna have the grates on, on these two trees?
They'll not, they'll not be in the system.
You don't have to figure that out before then. So as far as the cost for some.
The overall project is all gonna happen at the same time. Uh and so I guess there, there's a lack of clarity as to whether or not we need council approval to plant all these trees that are being either donated or um provided by.
There's no lack of clarity. You need council approval.
Good to know.
So you're, the whole, the entire planting, the whole thing is planned for the September seventeenth?
Correct.
Oh wow.
You thought it could be done in one.
So this update about the green space is just in addition to what we discussed previously. There. Okay.
Yeah.
But I think they had mentioned on a couple trees.
Right.
Just didn't have.
I, I know we just.
The location.
Thinking on this right now.
Last time that we came, we were told we needed to come back with species.
Sure.
And with a planning place for how and when this was gonna happen.
Sure.
You have already, this is all funded already?
You already have.
Already?
Yeah.
So funding wise ones.
But you wanna put in twenty-five trees on the eighteenth? Or just the two?
So we're also applying for a grant through the BNR. Um they, which would cover the cost of all of the trees. Uh we wouldn't do grades. We wouldn't do any of the rest of the project here. So it's just the tree that we go in this fall.
I'd like to hear what Larry thinks.
The trees, it's already destroyed the concrete sidewalk. Are you gonna replace them? The trees are already planted down.
We're replacing.
You gonna set them all down?
No, not gonna get anything done.
What's the purpose of beautifying Boone? We don't fix the sidewalks that are all tore up. Goes into the trees. That's beautiful. Why do you plant new trees in this town? The tree that needs to be cut up, broken up, new concrete, that'll be fine. But new trees, but already damaged? That's ugly. That's ugly for us. I, I go after all the thirty years ago, go plant that tree, get it down, look at it today. I mean, you can laugh all you want, but our town is beautiful. You get, the city council needs to walk up, walk from the fourth store to the forty ninth. And you tell me them trees are doing our streets good. Beautiful. I've been in charge twenty years. I've done everything good. Yeah. One fairway, try to get money. Who'll get no money? But you need to get a committee, go down the line and get somebody. I don't know, these trees are like, I'm gonna do this fair for time.
Didn't we? Didn't you check to make sure that the roots would not, that we were pretty, getting varieties that wouldn't do that, shouldn't damage?
Yep, there.
But I think Larry's point is you're gonna add twenty-nine, twenty, whatever, trees to what we already have, that some of them are causing an issue. You agree that some of those?
Some of them are causing issues, yep.
What are we gonna do with those?
Well, I think his, part of the question is, are the sidewalks getting replaced, right?
Terrible.
Are they, are they, are they eating this?
Look how that sidewalks are.
Well, I think these are two independent issues.
That's a.
The, the trees that we're putting in now, well, discussing putting in now.
When there's the business owners.
Have been deemed to have root structures that are not
This project.
impactful on the, on the uh concrete as the other trees. And so later on, you know, that would be an issue whether or not we planted new trees, right? They're gonna be there anyway. So we can tackle that at a later time and discuss the sidewalk trucker. But I just wanna make sure that, I, I wanna go back, way back to square one. I wanna make sure, so discuss the trees at the green space. The, um were we gonna discuss like the types of trees along the story as well? So I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just thought this talking about only these two at first.
Yeah, but we have a resident with a concern.
Sure.
Trying to address his concern. I know you wanna go back to step one, but he has a fair concern, so we're trying to address it. Waylon, let me ask you, do we have a problem with trees downtown currently?
Some damage to the sidewalks.
So I think we, not knocking planting trees, but I think we do have a concern with fixing what we currently have.
And that to me is.
Reminds me of Johnny Appleseed years ago. We used to plant trees and plant trees. I said, are we gonna maintain what we have? And we finally stopped planting a little bit and, and maintaining and catching up.
Right. And, and to me, that's another issue than planting these new trees. Now, if the trees that are currently there need to be dealt with, and some of the sidewalks need to be repaired, that to me is another topic that the city needs to address. That really wasn't this project. This project was putting in trees where there were no trees and filling that out. That was the scope of it.
But you're kind of putting the cart before the horse. Let's fix the issues we have before adding new issues.
Then we would.
If you wanna, if you wanna make, if you wanna make it pretty and make it look good, let's fix the sidewalks that are down there with the twenty-five thousand dollars that you wanna, you wanna put on these trees, right? A twenty-five thousand for sidewalks will go a long ways. I, I don't know, I don't know how much concrete's gone up in a long time, but but let's take down the trees that are there causing the problems and fix the ones and smooth it and get everything looking good.
A responsibility.
We can sure help, help them out. Their downtown committees is, is working towards that. That's what they're doing. And if they, and if her downtown committee and the committees there wanna put the twenty-five thousand dollars into something, why not put it into the sidewalks? It's a liability. If my sidewalks in front of my house are that way, I have to replace them. Otherwise I'll get sued because somebody's tripping and falling. That, that the responsibility needs to be on the homeowner, on the, the business owner as well.
Yes.
Does that grant that we have for homeowners going towards?
Residential.
For residential.
Placing, or putting sidewalks in, in established neighborhoods as well as uh fixing, repairing uh sidewalks in established neighborhoods.
For residential.
For residential. Yes, sir.
So I have no, I have qualms at all about expanding that to commercial personally, with people applying for the merrier.
But I think downtown would benefit from the downtown committee putting that money towards helping downtown fix the sidewalks and helping downtown with more trees and more problems and, and more upkeep. I don't feel like Waylon and his crew, nor the parks, has time or the money to go through and trim these trees and maintain them like they have. Everybody's really good about building things and build, building things and making new things, but we gotta slow down and maintain the things that you build.
Thank you. Yes.
Grants are great to get, but there's, how many grants are out there for maintaining stuff? That, it, the burden falls on us as taxpayers. And as a taxpayer, I hate, I hate that. Building stuff without having the money to maintain it.
I guess I, oh.
Go ahead. Currently, no. Currently, no.
No.
Property owners.
Not at this time.
That's why they're in a condition.
Why? You expect the city to pay for it all? Are you willing to participate in it? I'm asking.
Is there matching funds or is there something?
There's current, there's currently not.
Twenty-five percent.
Down in business owners, they can only use a free feed of their sidewalk. But the others, freedom and curbs and their responsibility, that's where the trees had caused a problem in the past. So that's where the help is needed from the curbs and three feet in on the, right in the line of the life course.
What would it take to expand our sidewalk program to downtown?
Vote to council.
You would just have to amend it.
Understand that doesn't, just a twenty-five percent.
It's twenty-five, right, yeah.
That's just a twenty-five.
I'm straight.
Match.
Until the funds run out. Yeah, and but we haven't had any applicants, have we?
Yeah, we just paid one of, uh, what was that one we last paid? Three thousand? It was a quite large sidewalk on a corner.
Oh.
And we have ten thousand in there. We budgeted, so we're down to between six and seven. Is that correct, Dave?
Leave so, and I think we've got two others.
Ending.
It's great that the word's getting out on that. Um, look, and, you know, we can put it on the agenda and talk about expanding it to commercial. I have no issue with that at all. I think the more the people, more the mayor that we can get all the sidewalks fixed, you know, help people get them fixed. So, yeah.
To get back to the, uh, tree project, I guess I can't speak for the committee on whether they would be interested in spending the money on fixing sidewalks. I think they are interested in doing downtown beautification in order to be considered a main street community. This is the project that they were putting together to use on that application to show that the the community and the city can do a partnership together to make something, um, some beautification for downtown. So going outside of those boundaries on sidewalk repair, I'm not sure that that would be, that would work for the application and what they are trying to accomplish here.
Well, I think also, we're looking at, you know, if the, if you, the group's able to fundraise the amount of money for the trees, we're looking at an investment twenty-five thousand dollars from private citizens.
Correct.
To the downtown. And it, I would really hate to step in the way of a group of private citizens trying to come together to make a, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar investment in our downtown.
And that.
How much?
Be a nuisance.
How much do you currently have?
It could ultimately be a nuisance. It could be.
You know.
How much have you currently raised, do you know?
I can't, I can't say that.
Yeah, so the chamber funds the, the money for these purchased trees and get the project kind of off the ground. Then we, the DNR grant would help in that effort and, um, and again, some matching brands. So it's, it's, it, it allows us to get further down the line. And then the fundraising effort goes throughout the community and to help us basically do the remainder of the project. So whether it be in phase one, would be the tree planting itself. Phase two, what happens would be when the grades come in and so on and so forth. Um, at the end of the day, the grant to, to Paul's point, the grant is for planting trees out of the DNR and the uh, reforestation effort out of the, of the Emerald Ashore, uh, uh, reforestation fund. Um, and so to your point, it is only for planting the trees, um, not to repair or, or carry um, damage from, from others. And yet though, at the end of the day, I mean, the, the downtown is downtown. It's not too big a fight, whether that means working with the city to, to find funds or to, um, you know, we figure out ways to, to fix our sidewalks. We have to remove trees and so, and plant new ones, what have you. And look better or differently, you know, whatever that looks like. There's also other options that maybe because of how you know, how businesses and how things have been, of course, I watched the main news, maybe we can do other entries. I mean, those are other options to look at. And yet though, at the end of the day, you know, the twenty-seven brown spots that either have stumps in them or anything in them. And so some green, vibrant trees usually help them.
Can I ask you how much you've funded to start this?
Five thousand.
Thank you.
And that's where you're at to date?
Yeah.
Well, that may have.
That's only.
The DNR grant is due tomorrow, it's due Wednesday, and so we're finishing up those things. And then the, the community outpouring of support, um, has started, but at the end of the day, we, you know, we're, we we're at least getting the project off the ground. The grades and things like that would be phase two, um, and that's where we're, where the community help would come in. Now, is there a way to keep these trees in the ground without grades? Of course. Um, but in the day, the grades help, um, make everything consistent and, and, I mean, keep it all the most down.
I'll just say I'm a little discouraged in that the committee was s- stating that they would come up with the twenty-five thousand dollars to do this project for the city. And possibly it's being shut down. I, I guess I, I felt we weren't coming to the, ask the city for funding other than taking care of the trees and watering them like they do the planters down there. So, um, I've already done fundraising. I certainly can return the funds to the, I have several thousand dollars. I'll, I could return the funds to those that have donated. They donated for putting trees and planting.
You only had five thousand dollars.
I, that's how much I have. That's what she has from Chamber. We all are fundraising.
I'm, what she's referring to is some of the opportunities that she's had with, with, uh, community members to, 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 to. And so that's fine. The, then the question becomes whether the community members are okay, you can get a fund for repairing the sidewalks or fixing the trees we have. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, and, and then they guess overall, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand other projects, but the trees themselves cost about five, uh, four thousand dollars.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, so the, the trees themselves buy those from Salama and Rich.
Bentley Rich.
Bentley Rich, um, about, about a little over, over, close to four thousand dollars. So then basically the Chamber view coming in and to fund the money is, you know, it seems a good company.
I don't know.
So, and that's okay. You know, that's what, that's what the downtown effort is for. That's why the Chamber is doing this. And so we know there's gonna have to be some of that money put up front in order to get these projects out of the ground. And frankly, success is a long success. So you have, if you're, or down with, like, our money, my money going, you know, unless you think, see things happening, then you're like, okay, I know where this is going.
I'm not saying I'm against it at all. I just think it seems a little sudden. I mean, you're less than thirty days and you're gonna slap twenty-six trees downtown?
And, and to balance with you, it comes, the.
This is like, barely, we've heard about it, what, once or twice? If I've been here, we talked about it? Yeah.
Uh, we've had.
Five weeks ago.
Yeah.
I just feel like you could have all your ducks in a row here and make sure you have the funding to complete the project. We don't wanna go have these trees put in because you have the ten thousand or, or let's say four thousand, that you, whatever you have. And then the grates never get done. The, you know, this, all this extra stuff that you wanna do never gets done. And all of a sudden, we just have these trees that we have to maintain. Right? So what, where's the other twenty-five thousand going for grates or the twenty thousand going for grates?
When will you hear about your DNR?
With like your eye, relatively soon. We never the one that wanted the, the September.
Think between now and September fifth, when our next meeting is, you'll know.
Beginning of September. There are the ones that wanted the, 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 the dates are days on site.
Why don't we give them until September fifth and they come back and make a report on the fifth? And then we can make a decision then. I think we're kinda beating a dead horse here. So, is that all right with you? Is that okay?
Speaking to council before, we were kind of under the impression that council was supportive of this project before we spent a lot of man hours planning the project, having Eric donate all of his time for this. This is all donated time for him for us to go out and do fundraising and things, if it wasn't gonna be okay for us to do this. So we knew that we needed to provide you with tree CCs of where they were gonna go. A couple other things, how it's gonna be taken care of and maintained. And we feel like we, we worked through some of that. We've been to the park board meetings. We've had conversations with people. Um, and felt like we had a pretty solid plan. And we weren't asking.
You said you've been to the park board. Are they okay with this?
Yes. So we talked.
Mike's okay with it? Yes, okay.
So part of the.
No. Uh, staff, staff will water, uh, Mike will take care of the trimming and that kinda stuff.
And so part of our plan for the DNR, we have to show a ten-year maintenance plan. Uh, but part of that is going to be Eric and his company taking care of those trees for the first three years. That's when they're gonna need the most attention, the most trimming, grooming, things like that. And he's gonna completely take care of that, so it wouldn't be a parks staffing issue at all. That's something else that we would fundraise and pay for. Um, and the parks then knew that it would not be a lot of work for them. Um, and it would be something that you could absolutely revisit if for some reason then these trees, I don't know. God said, what happened? If something happened and we needed to revisit us making more of a contribution, that absolutely would be a conversation that we we could have and be open to. Um, as Lunda mentioned, for of our getting this main tree designation, that we have to show that we're all gonna work together. That we all want this community to be better, to be vibrant. And we picked trees because the assessment we had in April, this was their number one recommendation, was that we put trees back down. And the assessment, the people who did that, we worked closely with the Main Street Iowa folks. And so we thought, let's do this. And when we reapply in May for that designation, we can show, look, we have pulled in the city to help partner with this. We have fundraised throughout the community to get this done. We have brought all these people together. It would be a really good thing to show our application. So but if you guys are kind of changing your mind, you're not wanting to do this, we need to know because Salama has trees ordered.
I don't think that we're against it, sorry, but I don't think we're against it. We just need more information on it. On, you know, on the fundraising, you know, come here with the twenty-five thousand that you wanna fundraise and say, we're ready to go. We've got all the support behind us. Cause right now I'm not seeing a lot of support behind it besides, you know, with the Chamber stepping up and helping up with the grant, which is great.
We have zero money that's gone out of pocket yet. We, Eric right now is donating so that we can show that, right, we have people who are willing to give back to these things for our application. Um, we don't have to have any money leaving our hands until we pick up the trees the week of September eighteenth. So we feel like we have time for that. Um, we are working on getting quotes, um, from Yoka Metal Works. Uh, the high school has a metal workings program and, uh, John Johnson also sits on our committee and is working with the guy who runs that program to allow students to come in and cultivate some grades and things like that. And so we don't have an exact dollar amount for costs for that or what our driving will be. Um, but he was happy to work on those things throughout the winter for us. Because it's trees and they have certain times when they have to be planted and have to be done. That's sort of what is making our timeline the way. We can't wait till spring to plant your trees. It's not a good time to plant trees. So.
Like I said, why don't you get all that information together? Like, I didn't know he was gonna take care of it for.
I didn't know there was a healthcare maintenance.
I didn't know that.
Forward that on.
So if you bring that information to us on the fifth, right? Is that when we're gonna have it? On the fifth?
Yes.
That'd be a Tuesday, right?
Day of the fifth.
On the fifth? And you have, you're farther along in the process. I don't, I don't think we're against this. We just I, I, I don't know, we, I, I, it kinda surprised me because you're five weeks out. I thought you were gonna come and say, hey, we got the twenty-five thousand, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. I mean, you and I talked about that, right? So. Here.
We're having this meeting on Wednesday. I need better numbers. We just, I just don't.
Sure. So the fifth would be a good time for you to come with that information. I don't think we're against it. I'm not against it.
I know.
We just need the more inform- information so we can buff on there to, to vote on it and put an action on.
Make sure we know that we're gonna vote on it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so.
For the whole, whole shebang.
Anyhow, can you? So we know what information you want us to have for that vote? Fundraising?
The, the more information, the mayor.
We've all, we've all got the tree CCs where everything is going. Eric provided all of that.
I could send Linda a list of things that we talked about today.
So you, can I ask, as we were before, are you're good with where they wanna put the trees? We're not talking about just the green space, but the other eight, how many? Twenty-eight?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? You're good with that? I mean, that's, if you're gonna vote, that's something that, oh, the elected officials will need to vote on.
We all have that information right now, don't we?
Yes, it's in the packet.
So it's in the packet.
You can make exceptions on there if we don't want a tree or whatever. We can do that at that time with the motion, right?
You can, yes, sir.
Yeah. I'd like to see the maintenance, the ten-year maintenance plan too, cause that's yeah. That's expensive.
That, that's what you want, ten-year maintenance?
Or I mean, they can go to thirty years if they want, but.
Yeah.
That's for the maintenance will likely be the first three years. After that, it would, the only thing that maybe would need to happen is the tree died and it needs to come out. Right?
There may be some ongoing pruning that needs to happen. But.
The bulk of the watering.
Right, the watering requirement should be, they should be established by that point, pass up for your point, the um, the main structural pruning to get them off the ground and get their structures going correctly, should be taken care of, kind of formative, get their growth going in the directions that we want it to be. Um, yeah, they'll need a little bit of continued raising up as they, as they get older so that they get the sidewalk clearance underneath them and then continue to keep it kind of.
I mean.
Away from the buildings as, but if they're, if they're set the right way when they're young, they're a lot easier to maintain long-term.
I, I do have one question.
Yes.
She mentioned that several of the spots they wanna put the new trees have stumps in them. Do you have arrangements made for somebody to grind them out and clean them out?
Yep.
See if they can replant.
Yeah.
And that's an additional cost.
That included in that fundraising, none of it.
That you're hoping you're.
Exactly.
Okay.
I think you, you come with that information. I think, I don't think there's gonna be a problem, Kelly.
Is there any other concerns with the concrete and sidewalks? I know the boxes are fairly small, and so there are some things that we've talked about, discussed, including in the, the planting processes to put down some, some barriers, some root barriers to help direct the roots down lower, farther away from the sidewalks, uh, before they start to come up and pressure sidewalks. Uh, so that's been included in, in what we're planning on planting. But is there, are we gonna get to the same concern again where it's like, are we gonna rip the sidewalks out and replace them? Because I can see that being something where stall out the planting process. Plant if you're gonna rip out sidewalks and re-concrete.
That's all you, you're the expert, so. One, oh, then, sorry, go, no, go ahead. I can wait.
Um, and we've asked for varieties that don't have, uh, a lot of buds that drop or fruit or they're messy. I mean, and that's his job is to pick ones that are gonna be smaller trees and not block a lot of the view, but, um, also don't have a lot that will be cleaned up.
Roots that are, that are known to be aggressive to sidewalks and the buildings or.
Door lines?
Again.
Door lines?
Exactly, correct. Yep.
So you said a three-year maintenance plan. Would you be willing, before that three years is up, to instruct staff on how to trim those up so we don't kill them?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
One question, Kelly, do you have an idea of the resident or the business owners downtown that have those trees in front, whether sidewalks have heaved? Have an idea of those businesses downtown that'd be willing to make the, and I'm assuming that means taking the tree out because the roots are there damaging it? So you're starting over? Do you have an idea of the, the business people downtown that would be willing to participate in that program if the city did, give some money for that?
I do not. I know of one business owner that.
How many are there, Jen?
Well, I'm just saying, like, the, the one that's on the corner of the, and stores are very interested in getting that tree.
Yeah. Sure. How many businesses are there that have it? Because if I can get that information, I'll start looking at that. I mean, ultimately, these elected officials are gonna decide, but at least if I have that information, we can share that with the elected officials.
Oh, for the sidewalks?
Yes. Yes, yes. And I'm assuming that if there's any improvements in those sidewalks where those trees are heaving now, that before those improvements are done, those trees would be need to taken out. Is that fair? Do I understand that correctly?
Because I'm assuming the roots are heaving them. You're not gonna be able to place the concrete if the roots are there.
Most likely.
Is that fair? Okay, just so I have an understanding. So, could you give me that? Okay.
But instead of taking your bounty, you know. One of those pounds.
Sure, that's not my area of expertise. Yeah. It would be an option for the city to do that.
Get a little hand machine.
Thank you. Okay, next up, uh, see public hearing on the matter of the adoption of the Southwest multi-family residential urban revitalization plan for the Southwest multi-family residential urban revitalization area. Written comments? Public comments? Yes. Yeah.
All right, I said a couple of questions. Um, and one goes back to the city council meeting a couple of months ago. And the zoning was approved for R three. And I hadn't seen anything in the notes that said that if Kating didn't follow through and go back to R one.
It's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution.
Okay.
I know, I know.
The, uh, the other question I had is, there's a couple of things here, and in reading this, it says something about necessarily the interest of the public health, safety and welfare of the residents. There's something in that language that's not healthy?
So I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Says, whereas this needs to take place because it says it's necessary in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare of the residents of the city. And that the area of sustaining these criteria. I think on page one.
Just required legal language?
Yeah, yeah, just some statute language that's required.
Okay, um, and then the last thing is. This is about a tax evasion, is that correct? Should they tax evasion for a certain amount of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering how that plays out if you're going to add that many people. How does that push on the infrastructure of a city of food? If we're not getting these taxes for those.
They'll still pay water bills. They'll still, they still. The infrastructure, Kating is putting all the infrastructure in, streets, roads, sewers. They're doing all of that, so it's no cost to the city.
But maintaining that.
They maintain it.
They will. And the, the potential retention fund, there was some discussion about that.
They maintain that as well.
That as well, okay.
That, that's, if, these are rental, these are rental units, so their liability falls on them.
And they retain ownership up there.
They retain ownership.
They don't sell it off for.
But we'll still collect water, sewer. All that, that stuff, that, that's not abated. The only thing that's baited is the property tax.
And that's just for three years.
It's just for three years. Yeah, it's, it's, when we do stuff like this, it's all about long-term investment, long-term revenue. Um, you know, uh. We may not see it immediately, but we will see it. And it's better than that lot sitting there empty, not growing anything. Plus, you saw the housing assessment, so we need it.
Yeah, I, I, we've put a lot of events into our property that's toward it as well.
Right.
Are they sure that what's coming in next to us is going to be maintained, um, especially that retention fund as well.
Well, we toured a Kating uh development.
Knoxville.
Where was it?
Knoxville.
Knoxville, and it's very nice. Um, there's one down in Cary too.
They have some pretty strict rules on the people who live there.
Yeah.
Um, to keep it and make it look nice, um, which was a huge, I mean, thing for me to know that.
And they can't park on the street. There's all kinds of rules and restrictions that they have.
Welcome.
Okay, so A thirty-one thirty-one resolution adopting the Southwest multi-family residential urban revitalization plan.
So moved.
Second, call the roll.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Alcatraz?
Yes.
Liamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
A D thirty-one twenty-eight resolution fixing date of September fifth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M for the meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan and dispersment agreement. And the issuance of water revenue capital loan notes not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars to. Evidence the obligations of the city they're under.
So. Second.
Call the roll.
Men?
Yes.
Alcatraz?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Sine?
Yes.
Okay, E thirty-one twenty-nine resolution fixing date of September five, two thousand twenty-three at six P M for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan and dispersment agreement. And the issuance of sewer revenue capital loan notes not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to evidence the obligations of the city they're under.
So moved.
Second, call the roll.
Alcatraz?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yeah.
Sine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Day number four, report of standing committees, A, Policy Administration, Linda.
No report.
Public Safety, David?
No report, Your Honor.
Utility, Terry?
Uh, one thing that was on, wasn't on the agenda at the last utility meeting, we heard from several citizens on the stormwater issue that exists in Country Club Drive.
Yeah.
And uh, seems that this addition was built and the developer didn't install any storm sewer in this addition. So we have asked staff to look into this as to ways we can mitigate that and the cost that it will. Uh, be imposed upon the city to get it done. And they will be bringing that back to utilities the next time we meet. The second thing on here is the second contract amendment for Fox Strand, and with that, I'll turn it over to.
Thank you, sir. So as you're aware, we have done one contract amendment with them. This is in relation to the UV project at the wastewater plant. The amount on the first uh amendment for this contract was not, of an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand one hundred dollars. The second amendment uh to the contract with Fox Strand. Uh, is an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. So that's what we're talking about tonight. As you know, there have been considerable issues with this project, UV project down at the wastewater. Uh, the city would like nothing more for the contractor to finish it. That has not happened yet. Uh, so Fox Strand is still involved, obviously, as the engineering consultant for the project. And so it's taking more time, and of course, if you're using them and it, and uh, then there's a charge to that. Uh, Perry uh from S E H has reviewed this and feels that the uh charges up to the twenty-three nine are appropriate and reasonable. Uh, Utility Committee, I believe, made a motion to recommend approval of this uh contract amendment. An amount of twenty-three nine, twenty-two thousand nine hundred. What this does is allow Andrea to pay those invoices we get from Fox Strand. Uh, for an additional twenty-three thousand nine hundred. Hopefully this doesn't happen, but if it, if the project extended where it's above that amount. This will be brought back to you as well in the form of Amendment Number Three. So the city staff will not pay any more than twenty-three thousand nine hundred up to this point. I just got an email today that they ran into another problem, so.
Yes.
There are ways out from getting this thing done. So, yeah, they're, uh, yeah. The, all these are building every day. Well, we should recoup our. So. Um. It's not like it. Should get it all back.
Need a motion.
Yes, and I have another thing. It'll be fun. I make that motion to pay the twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars.
Call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Sine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Alcatraz?
Yes.
Just one more update on the UV project. Uh, Jim and I are anticipating a closed session. On the, on the Tuesday, September fifth, council meeting to discuss this project with you guys.
Good.
In a closed session.
Yeah. Economic Development, Terry?
Um, no report other than that. We, we may have a meeting on Sep- Tuesday, September fifth, depending on a couple of BDF requests. Um, and the committee will meet at Pritchard Brothers at eight A M of this coming Wednesday to approve their uh BDA. Uh, request and take a look at their new improvements.
But. Okay, number five, Department Report, Building Official, Dave Aides.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, tonight, for your consideration, uh, we are presenting a petition from Trinity Lutheran Church. Uh, for an alley vacation. Uh, I believe Dave Saudi is here tonight um on behalf of the church. Uh, the request is for a vacation of the entire alley. From the seven hundred block of twelfth, the north south alley to the eleven, excuse me, seven hundred block of eleven. Uh, when we got the uh, the alley vacation petition, one of our um requirements is to send out letters uh to the adjoining neighbors on this. We did have three objections um to this full alley vacation from the adjoining neighbors. I believe one of the neighbors is here this evening. Um. Um, regarding access to their properties. Um, we went to planning and zoning on the eleventh regarding this. Uh, we made a, a presentation to them. Planning and zoning's um recommendation was a alternative. Um, vacation on this was to allow for vacation, but only a portion of the alley. Um, I believe in your packet, there's a, there's a couple maps, first being the uh, the full alley vacation request. The second one is the uh, um, what planning and zoning had recommended. Their recommendation was to allow an alley vacation to a point that's thirty feet north of the first property affected there in the alley. The thirty feet was, came up with uh, because I'm approximately about half the distance of that uh, that lot there, which is also owned by Trinity. Um. We uh. Would present that to you tonight. Um, with that recommendation, and we would ask a motion just to move forward with that process if. If you're able to this.
Does that allow for city staff to get in there and plow that without?
One of the things planning and zoning recommended, and Wayland, maybe you can answer this, is. Uh, we would want all public easements to be, remain in place. One of the things planning and zoning. Uh, asked was, uh, if we vacate this, there'd be an easement there for, for snow removal. Uh, one of the things um they considered when they moved this back to a point thirty feet north of that first property line is if. Uh, that couldn't happen, that would still allow a place to move snow to.
Well, couldn't the snow removal trucks come through the parking lot and drive down through there and catch it?
They would be able to if they had access all the way through there.
And we get Trinity to assure us that we will?
Babe, I think maybe.
Yeah, I could speak to that. Our intention when we started this, I, we know that you could just ask for part of the vacate, right? I don't know if we could, but so that's why we just put in full vacate. Our intention was to leave the alley open. Um, for access through that uh south end. And we're, we're looking at putting like a possible swinging gate. It's a safety issue is the only reason, reason we're looking at it. Um, just for during school days.
Right.
So we'd have a gate, a swinging gate type at the north end of the alley. And then our only thing would be to come back and maybe request eighteen to twenty feet instead of thirty. We went out, looked at it, weren't done with that, but um. If I can show you, I don't have to tell you what you guys do, but um, that would be our only comeback is looking at eighteen to twenty feet. But our whole intention was to let everyone use that alley, the neighbors to use their driveways and that other lot to be able to pull anybody home. So the eighteen to twenty feet instead of thirty would be our only thing we would. Ask that we consider.
I don't think. The recommendation from planning and zoning.
So we can't change that, right?
You can, you can make whatever um decision you want on that.
Oh, okay, so we can override P and Z.
So, um, for the citizens that objected, um, how they feel about this adjustment?
The only thing I would have asked is my neighbor, Ms. Wickman here. That land loss, or when she goes to back out of her alley, will that be enough room for her to be able to back out and head south?
Sure.
That's why, just because of a planned zone, they came up thirty foot, that would give her plenty of room to be able to back out and head south.
That was, that was another thing that they looked at when they come up with that distance was ability for her to back out. Her parking area is toward that north area of her property line, so that allows her some area to back out. At south of the remaining public.
Is that thirty foot a deal breaker for the church?
Not necessarily. We haven't even had time to discuss it. I wasn't aware of a planning zoning meeting. I wasn't.
Okay.
Didn't notify, so I wasn't here, but um, just looking at it, talking to a couple of trustees. We have a, we're on a meeting right now at seven, so I'm waiting for that. I was gonna report and talk to the trustees. Uh, but I don't, you know, thirty to twenty to thirty, I just, we just need to look at that and see if that's. The, the reason the thirty feet goes back quite a ways, I mean, if we have a swinging gate at that point, that still allows cars to kind of, which we would still want cars to be able to come around and go into a parking lot that way. We just don't want too big of an area. That is, is easily accessible. We don't wanna, we don't wanna keep her from being able to pull in and back out. We're not, that's not what we're after. We just wanna make sure that. Twenty to thirty, we can kind of look at that as one thing, because thirty just, I measured it out, it looks like a lot, and it.
It's about half, I think they, again, they came up with that because it was approximately one half of that lot adjoining uh to the property.
Right, and then that's, I said, who wants?
They've taken over eight feet, ten feet.
Is it a deal breaker? Probably not. I mean, because we need to, just for safety reasons, during the school day, as soon as the school day is over. The gates will be pulled back in and the access to the alley will be full. There's no piles and other traffic, so. Pam, did you want to add anything? And we'll make sure before, I mean, if maybe it isn't, does need to be thirty, we just looked at it.
Why don't we do twenty-five and call it good?
I'd like, I mean, the neighbor and asking what you had.
Compromise.
Decision, that's where.
You guys wanna make a decision and come back if they come?
This has to come back to council anyway, to make an adjustment to what they recommended.
Okay.
Proving them moving forward at this point.
Correct.
And with, with your thoughts.
Yeah.
It would be to have a public hearing regarding.
Yeah. They need a motion.
Well, why don't you guys get together and figure it out? Figure out what that magic number is and then get back to us.
Yeah, there.
It's nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Finance Officer Andrea.
Well, yeah, um, so much feed on the software. We're about. Free course of the way done um converting. Hope you guys uh looked at the accounts payable, council bills, um, and like the new reports. Um, I feel that it's a lot cleaner. Um. It's a lot of work. I'll, it will be, trying to go that uh, there have been struggles. Um, but there are definitely a lot of um things that the software can do that our old software cannot do. One of which, um, I sent out an email uh to all council members on, to provide me with a email address. Uh, so that you guys can get your direct deposit forms and do payroll, some, some payroll changes through a web-based um software. Um, I've gotten probably about half of yours. So if you haven't gotten me an email address that you would like me to utilize, uh, let me know that. Um, the other thing is that there is a software training in Wisconsin. Um, and Emma, uh, my accounts payable, uh, payroll specialist and myself feel that it would be very beneficial. For us to go to see that. Um, as that we're a very, although I feel like I'm in training every day. Um, we're limited on the number of hours that we really get to dig into the software. And the software can do a lot of stuff that we just are barely um. Meet to the service. So with that, um, I would like to ask for permission for out of state travel for Emma and myself.
That we approve out of state travel for Andrea?
Second.
Thank you. Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Sine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Alcatraz?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Uh, City Attorney, Jim?
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, Public Works, Wayland?
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, Engineering, Bill?
Thank you. Tonight, uh, we have change order number three for the South Marion West Park Avenue project. Mike Dan.
Mike Danberg from S E H is here, and he is going to explain the reason for this change order.
Thanks, Phil, counsel. Uh, change order three, and again, it's, I kind of summarized the one and two that you guys have already operated with. You know, were based on water main, storm sewer utilities existing, getting around those, making things fit. Um, it, it probably been nice if we'd have done this with that, but this change order three now is dealing with two sanitary sewer services on the west side of Marion. And so as we've kind of tried to fit this storm sewer in with the existing water main and the existing storm sewer that runs west from Marion, what we found out now is we're running into the sanitary sewers. And so we're gonna do some redesigning. We're gonna shoot some of the pipe tomorrow. Actually, we have a meeting on site. And, and just kind of get it, get it in there. And so it's good that I came tonight, I think, just for us, like, you know, three change orders already on this job. I know it's been a little bit like, okay, what's going on? And I think it's, it's good to explain that, you know, when we come into these kind of projects that have that existing infrastructure, and we've got to put new infrastructure. So on this job, basically, all we're doing is new storm sewer. Because we're curbing guttering the roadway. You have to curb, we had to put intakes in a storm sewer, but we're working around existing sanitary and water main, right? And so we struggle in the industry with, there's two ways we can do that. We can invest a bunch of time, energy in design and go out and pothole and, and really figure out exactly what's out there so we can design around that. Or we, we take the, the approach of less investment upfront, get you the city information that we can, put the plans together and design together. And sometimes everything works out great. Sometimes you end up like we are here, but we've had to make some some considerable design changes in the field to get everything to fit what we found is actually out there. Um, the good thing with the change orders that you've seen so far, first two is we were able to redesign some things and get rid of some of the bid items and some of the high cost things, and we kept it pretty low. Uh, this one actually is for two services for fifty-five hundred, and that includes the contractor potholing. Um, it's, it's, we're gonna probably, we're gonna be close to those sewer services. So we're gonna put a, a better pipe material in to make sure that they operate for the future. Um, but the storm sewer is gonna be real close to it, but what we do, right? It's just in that same area. Right now, with change order three, um, the total of the, all three change orders is nine thousand one forty, so it's, it's less than one percent of the overall contract. Again, that's something from the engineering standpoint, it's your guys' dollars. I don't wanna say it's not important that we don't have change orders, right? But it, it's, it's a pretty small amount right now in the overall contract scheme at less than one percent. The hope is we get out of that Marion stretch with this storm sewer. As you get farther south on Marion, and then as you go east on Park, there's a lot less, that sanitary sewer gets really deep. The water main becomes something that we don't have to worry about. We don't have services there because they don't have property. You know, there's no residential properties on that stretch. So my hope is that we can get through this part of Marion and we're done messing around with that stuff and we can kind of move forward.
The scary, the scary part is your hope is, and this is three change orders and the work has barely begun. That's the scary part of it.
No, and I, and I understand that. The, the work that we're doing now is all in the shallow sanitary sewer where the existing storm sewer is and where the new water main that came in from the west into Marion or to the east. And so we're, again, we started in kind of that spot where all the trouble was gonna be. If we started on Park, we'd have went half the construction season and not had this, right? But I'm actually, you know, it's good that we've started in the worst spot so we can find out what we have, and it's not something that's gonna happen in the future. But, yeah, I understand it's the meeting tomorrow is gonna be a lot of conversation about, you know, work production, how much we're gonna get done, looking at the schedule, looking at working days and figuring out how we can get back on track.
Okay.
The, uh, staff would need a motion to approve this, uh, change order if you so wish.
Change order. Second. Call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Alba? Boyanson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Yeah, next up, public safety, Chief Adams.
No report, Your Honor.
Chief Weebold.
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, city administrator Bill.
Thank you, sir. So the first item here is discussion of the movie proposal that was presented at the August seventh, uh, twenty twenty-three council meeting. There is a resolution, uh, in the packet in case but I will tell you that the amount that the city, uh, if you so choose to, uh, move forward is not in the resolution. Uh, so we didn't wanna obviously put an amount in there because we don't know. So it's open for council discussion, uh, and, uh, I'll be quiet.
My two cents is I'm, I'm not, uh, necessarily against the proposal at this time, but I don't, I personally don't feel I've had enough time to explore it. Um, I know there are other communities that have been involved in, uh, this movie making project. And so I really am, I guess, interested in talking to some of them and finding out, um, if they felt it is a, a worthwhile project for the community to be investing their money in. It is, um, we had talked initially fifty thousand, then it went down to twenty-five thousand, which still is a significant amount that we wanna make sure it's being well spent uh, and a good investment in our community. So I just don't feel I've had enough time to talk to some of the other communities that have been involved. I don't know if anyone else has had that opportunity to kind of research it a little bit more.
I doubt anybody's gonna be able to give you that data. The economic impact that, that will, uh, movie like this will make on the community, the data is ambiguous at best. Um, it, it's gonna be directly related to the, the perception that you have, the aspect that you're looking at it from. Um, I did some research on this, uh, and talked to a, a couple of people about it. Um, in the community alone, between Chamber and and C V B and the city and the county and Seven Oaks and Boone Scenic Valley, all those entities put together spend about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year on advertising and budget. And their reach, with the exception of C V B, is regional. The reach that we will get with this movie initially statewide would supersede any of the, the reach that we have in that advertising budget. With the exception of C V B. C V B does go outside the state to advertise. That alone would tell me that that twenty-five thousand dollars would be well spent. If we're gonna reach all four corners of the state, they're gonna premiere in twelve movie theaters throughout the state of Iowa, then nationally, then internationally. I did some research on Thor and the producer, and he's pretty well known in the movie community. He's had several awards, including a, a first place director award at the Cannes Film Festival. That's pretty impressive when you think about it. Um, like I said, gathering data on this, what kind of economic impact it has is, is almost impossible to do. From an economic stamp, development standpoint, standpoint, whenever we do something from an economic development standpoint, whether it's a housing project or a B D F grant or a business, welcome to town, whatever that may be, it's a leap of faith for us. We don't know what kind of economic impact it's gonna make. We know that the catering project will eventually generate tax revenue, but we don't know the exact economic impact it will make on the restaurants here or the businesses here or the gas stations here. We can't, we don't have that. We can't gather that data. You're asking for data that I can't, we can't give you. And you go to, if you go to a city, like I, the movie that they just produced was from Iowa Falls, I believe. I saw the trailer for it. Was Iowa Falls, it started out with Iowa Falls, uh, home of whatever the university is there. Uh, that's how the movie started. It's, it's all about branding. And whether or not, and if you read through the agreement, then you know that they're going to highlight several of the attractions here in town, Boone Scenic Valley, Seven Oaks. Um, they're gonna use several of the businesses in town. I would imagine Dutch Oven or Whistlestop or something like that to, to produce this movie. And I know your concerns, you know, you and I talked about this, and your concern was that downtown isn't ready for it. But I, I will tell you that they're not going to shoot a bunch of vacant storefronts and put that in their movie. That's not the way it works. So I'm just telling you that to require that kind of data that can't be really I mean, you can't really, uh, get a grasp on it. Every time, like I said, every time we do the, a economic development project, it's a leap of faith for us. We're banking on the fact that what we're doing is gonna make a difference. But measuring that data is very difficult, other than the tax dollars we're gonna get, property tax dollars we're gonna get from the catering project. We know that. We know what that number is. Kinda. But the rest of it, I don't know. I don't know how much money they're gonna spend here in town. Are they gonna drive to Ames and spend it? I don't know that. Nobody does.
Well, I do know that, you know, Iowa Falls gave them fifteen thousand dollars for that movie, and they came back and asked for more money. And they didn't wanna give it to them.
Right.
And you can find the trailer for this other movie online, but where do you, where do you even watch the movie? I couldn't find it anywhere.
And your point being?
The point being, nobody's seen it.
That's not true.
Has anyone seen a movie that they have produced?
I saw, I saw a trailer that they produced with, uh, the Lindsay Wagner trailer and stuff.
This is a scam. I'm sorry. I've seen it in, in books that have been written about traveling and, et cetera. They want our money to, to highlight our community, which might be better spent somewhere else. If we'd never seen one of the movies they produced, how do you know? And like I said, who's, who's gonna see it? Where is it gonna be distributed? Is there a guarantee?
The fact is, you can't guarantee distribution of a film.
I can.
And you can't guarantee that it's gonna be fully financed.
What I can guarantee you.
Haven't finished yet, please. Please.
You interrupted me, Eli.
I did not.
He had a war. Did interrupt.
Proceed, Governor.
Don't. You don't wanna go there.
Proceed. Yes.
What I can guarantee you is that they will spend twenty-five thousand dollars in this community.
Oh, you cannot guarantee that. No, you can't.
Oh, really? You can't guarantee me that no people will ever see it.
It goes.
And interrupt again.
Oh, yeah, you can guarantee that.
You can campaign all you want outside these cameras, but don't campaign in here.
Look.
I think the question is the, the movie and, and deciding on whether we feel this is a good investment for the, our.
What I'm saying to you, they have a fifteen day production schedule. They have fifteen members in their cast. Where are they gonna stay? In our most, where are they gonna eat? In our restaurant, they're gonna spend that twenty-five thousand dollars here. So we're gonna get that money back one way or the other.
How much is the director's salary? How much is the producer's salary? How much are the actors' salaries? That money's not staying here. If you want some, look, we can put twenty-five thousand dollars to use, if it's even available, to a multiplier effect that will stay locally if we have something, say, like a, a competition for, uh, various murals and we, you know, provide, uh, a grant or something like that. The, we could, we could pay, we could have a local filmmaker make a movie for, for the twenty-five thousand dollars total. Total. What? You don't believe me? I bet somebody could.
Hi, may I respond to your statement?
Sure.
Yeah, it's what you paid. You can, of course, you can make a movie, so you can make a movie. They've made movies. And some of her great, some of her not so great. What we're talking about here is a motion picture. I'm sorry you haven't seen it. There is a link where you guys can all watch the, their latest film, which I came back. It's won awards. It's played at theaters. It'll probably be on TV, either on a Netflix or Hulu. But Bob, it's with either because that's the kind of film. I'm gonna ask you. Do you agree with?
Yeah, we've read it.
You have it?
Uh-huh, we've read it. I mean, I have it.
See what the city gets, whether it's twenty-five grand. Did you see what the city gets in terms of the coverage? If this thing, if it's a Hallmark style movie, and I'm sorry, it's not a scam. It's not a scam. They, they're competitive, it's a legitimate production company. I'm sorry. It hurts to stand. But the images that they have agreed to provide in their film are in a way is more than you could ever ask for. When people want to provide financial incentive to a production company to film in their community. There are currently thirty-five states, Iowa used to be one of them, who provide financial incentives to production companies for this, this reason. You make money playing, then make a movie in your town. You make money. It depends on this town's ability to capitalize on the fact that somebody's making a movie here. It's not just the fact that they're making a movie, but the fact that they're making the movie draws people in to see. They're talking about casting local people. They're gonna make a payroll. They don't do it for nothing. They will pay these people. They will pay our store owners for permission to shop or to film inside their stores. They're gonna drop, Terry said, they'll drop an easy twenty-five grand in here. And I think the part that makes the difference here is that if you look at that first paragraph in the agreement, if they don't green light it, it's a two hundred thousand dollar production. It's not a fly by night. Hey, let's make a movie like Judy Garland and maybe Rudy. If they don't green light it, we don't quit, pay them any money. It doesn't happen. It's not a scam.
They don't know what green light means.
Green lighting means that they have enough money to do it. Other investors, they're seeking other grants as well as twenty-five thousand dollars is a
But they're looking for two hundred thousand in addition to produce this.
That's my cost.
Right, that's what, yeah.
So I believe they are also waiting on a grant from the, um, from Iowa, the state of Iowa. It's, uh, because of the writer's strike, if they're not answering any grants right now, but they've submitted their application and they've received one.
So when, when, how long would it be until we know whether they establish their funding source? I mean, because.
They have to provide, again, they have to provide certified document that says they have the money in the bank to the city before the city would release these funds. This is a grant from the city.
Because this is a short timeline. I mean, they're saying by November, I mean, it'll, they're talking it'd be released for this Christmas. Yeah, this Christmas season.
Like a request to be recognized?
All right, well, I was gonna call on Laura back there. She's had her hand up for a while. Go ahead. There a few, uh, council, a few council meetings back, council approved for them to repurpose the money they have in their budget that normally would go to grants to use toward the Christmas program for twenty twenty-three.
So nothing from the budget is going towards this project?
I just answered your question. I'm not sure how to respond to that. I just answered it.
Yeah, yes, thank you. So I am so glad that you brought up that Iowa used to have film tax credit system. What happened to that film tax credit system?
You want me to respond to that?
No.
Or are you gonna?
It went down in flames.
Wow.
Management. People didn't know where the money was going.
One person said that.
It only takes one person.
And you're.
This Monterey, I oh, I have. I I thought I had. Go ahead.
So I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This Monterey. I'm sorry, this film. The Music Man, was it called? Not called The Music Man. Anybody familiar with that film?
Yes.
Sounds a lot like that.
Are you talking about? Give kids costumes and instruments? These are afraid of? Is that what you're saying?
Fast talking person comes in from out of town. Tries to take us for ruse. That's what I'm talking.
I'm sorry, I'm asking you a question since you've never before. I'd like to ask you a question. Why is this a personal thing with you?
No.
I think it is.
I don't. I absolutely do and I will speak if I may be called upon.
Look, I thought I still had the floor.
Go ahead.
I are. Guys, this is a terrible idea, a terrible idea. Films are uniquely risky things to put money in. That is why they have full production companies that raise money for them and most films flop badly. They do. They do. And we would be much better served keeping all of our dollars locally. Especially since we, look. We have had a focus on our downtown. We could leverage that twenty-five thousand dollars. Many times more. In our community for local artists to give them a leg up.
Okay.
And if that is something that we want to pursue in the future. We can have a long discussion about it so we can map it out. And we can talk to other communities like Iowa Falls. That have been with this particular production company or other ones. And if that's something we wanna market ourselves for, we can market ourselves for it. And see what multiple offers offers come to the table in that realm. But to take the first thing that walks through the door. Is not a good idea. I'm done.
Yes, Linda.
Mr. Steins, it is personal and I'll tell you why. And I'd like to introduce you to our arts board that you haven't bothered to meet. Chris Sutton, Pamela Grunstad. David Byrd. Here's why I know it's personal. Because last November, you made a Facebook post on your Facebook. That said my name and encouraged your followers to not attend the Christmas show.
That's false.
Because Linda lightly was threatening it. Is it false?
Yes, it's a.
Mr. Byrd, did you not have engage in a text message with Mr. Steins because you saw it on the on you saw it?
I could see it. But that's the the way she characterized it, completely false.
That's not well, that's.
So, I mean.
You can say it's false, it doesn't matter. The bottom line is you voted for the arts program. You voted for it. You pulled me out and the consent agenda. Both you did not want me on the board.
No.
You did not, but because I bully, which this is coming right now. Ms. Williamson, you were on the previous arts commission. You came to one event, didn't even stop by the arts board to say anything on the Knights of the Green. But you voted for the program as well. The reason. That we don't have twenty-five thousand dollars in our budget to match is because the previous arts commission did not get set up properly. And to budget. Something you all should know, you budget for a year in advance. So we haven't had the opportunity to even put before the. City administrator to put before the council. Any type of funding for projects that we would like to do because we were cleaning up last last the arts commission's mess. And when I say that, the ordinance that was given to us, that was a city ordinance that we had to follow. Only had two changes from the previous arts commission. That was we got two less people on our board. And um we didn't have anything to do with politics. And so we had to recreate, we had to create the bylaws, the events policy, the public policy. And all of the other outlines that we had to do and the grant program. Itself, so people can actually apply for a grant that the previous arts commission or did not do for three years.
And it's not, that is absolutely not true.
Well, I have the documentation. I have the floor right now, Mr. Byrd. I'm coming to the floor. I have the floor. We said it. No, I'm not lying.
Ladies, Linda's got the floor.
So with that, we, well, if if you wrote them, Mr. Byrd, we got what we got.
They were endorsed by the Economic Development Committee, created by the. Were approved by the full council. I sat in this chamber and and they were approved.
Ms. Stumpf, do you have them? Because you handed me everything that that you, the city had. So all I know is we haven't received them, so that's so then that's then your beef is with them, not with me. We took what we had in our hands, we took what we had in our hands and we did the best we could. That we we took this agreement to. The mayor and to Mr. Scare to see if it should even come before this council. We did the vetting. We didn't come here and ask you to help us do the vetting. I haven't had, we have, our arts board has not come to you three times asking you to help us. Do the project we wanna do like the downtown Boone group has. We can all have something and people need to understand the funding comes from different places. We didn't get the opportunity to apply for a hotel motel tax grant. Because we were still trying to get our ducks in a row and it does take time when you meet once a month. So with that said, it is personal, Mr. Steins. It's very personal. And I want, and it is not a lie, and I have the screenshot, so we will produce it if that's what, but I want the city council to know, the people that don't know that that happened. And we sat on it. This board rose above that. And went and did a city show and did a Christmas show anyway. That is the only negative comment that has been out there. Out on anything that we have seen was from you, Mr. Steins. This is from you. And shame on you. Shame on you. You you can't support the arts. Shame on you.
May I make a request?
Yeah, let's get back on track.
We table this until the next meeting and that way it would give. I guess I personally.
Oh, no, I I wanna vote no on this. I'm gonna vote no on this every day of the week. Like, if we do this, we're getting taken for a ride.
I just feel I need more time to.
Look, I'd be happy to be proven wrong, but I just.
You know what? You're making a statement, sir, where you're saying that if if this council. Goes with this resolution, you're saying. This council is making a bad decision because they're going to be screwed.
You said, you said that.
No, you said that.
The citizens are gonna.
Making a big mistake. Why? Why are you making a big mistake?
I'm. Films are uniquely risky thing to put money in.
Oh, my.
I'm just asking time to do some research so that I can make a good decision. I haven't had time to check. I and I haven't. I I didn't get it done.
I have a question.
Hold on, he's got a question.
You're your vote.
Brendan, I'll put you in for it, but do you have any?
I I live in a problem. I I mean, this is way out of any sort of.
Anything you've ever done.
I have experience, but I I will.
For economic development.
I don't.
I I make a motion then that the city grants twenty-five thousand dollars to the shooting. They have a motion to grant twenty-five thousand to the move.
I'll second that. Call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Steins?
No.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
No.
Williamson?
No.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yep. My next item. Is, I believe at the last council meeting, we talked about the steps that food trucks have to take according to ordinance and what I got from that from the elected folks. Was the criminal history check that they had to get through Des Moines. So. Rather than what staff has talked about and Jim can jump in if he wants. Uh there, as you know, there's an application for this that they fill out. Um, we can exempt the food trucks from having to go get. A criminal history through DCI if you wish, but what we would like is to. At least put the question on the application process. Asking um do they?
Certified under penalty.
Yeah, do they certify under penalty? Correct. Uh that they have no no criminal history or do you have a criminal history either yes or no and they gotta mark it on there? Jim feels more comfortable with that, I believe, uh than just not doing anything and not making them do it. I think we talked about other solicitors that are in our neighborhoods. We want them to have to do that because they're knocking on doors and things like that. So this just would refer to the uh food truck. And one other note, there's nothing on there, I believe, on fire inspections, but the code says, correct, that they must go through it. So once they get the application from the city, they're not following up and getting that inspection. Is that true? Justin?
Yeah, but half of them, yeah.
So um if we could put something on the application that states, what would you like on there?
Either before it's approved final by through Kim or whatever that we've signed up, the fire department has signed up. If it's a. You know, an ice cream truck doesn't need a fire inspection.
But uh but. But who can do that on your staff? Is it just? Okay, so there's always somebody here so they can just, they got the truck here, they walk out, they look at it, they got a.
Yep.
An anthill system and a fire extinguisher, you're good to go.
Yep, the ones that have done it have either stopped by here or we've made arrangements. If they're setting up that uh uh Knights on the Green or Downtown Farmers Market or wherever, then we've just headed up there to make it happen.
The only thing that I wanna make sure that's in it is I agree with. I with it. Being like an ice cream truck or a mobile truck, something like that needs to be. Part of a background check, you know, going to people's houses. You know what I mean? Does that make sense? So the only thing we're we're exempting everybody, we're except exempting food trucks from the ordinance. Yes, just just food trucks.
That's right.
A stationary. So we would add it to the application and they would have to mark it and we would have that on record.
Yeah.
And then something from Justin uh putting on there that. To let them know that they have to have the fire inspection, which is code, correct?
It's in our fire code.
Yeah. Is that the direction the elected officials would like to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. All right, so what we will do is uh we'll make some changes to the uh application. And then we can bring that back to you if you if you so desire. Jim, did I leave a thing out? Do you have anything to add?
No, I I I agree that's the way to go. Yeah.
That's all it. Other than, and I think we've talked about it before. Okay, September fifth, next council meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that's all I have, sir. Okay, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on consent agenda that you want to remove and discuss separately? If not, any motion to approve.
Move. Second.
Call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
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 Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yeah.
Okay, number seven, ordinance is A, wave second reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-three placing stop sign for eastbound traffic on Hancock Drive where it intersects with Corporal Rogers Sneddon Drive. Chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero two five six.
Still moved.
Call the roll.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
B, third reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-three placing stop sign for eastbound traffic on Hancock Drive where it intersects with Corporal Sneddon Drive. Chapter sixty-five, section sixty-five point zero two five six.
Double.
Second. Call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Move to it.
Move to a dot.
Wow. Move to it out.
You beat him. Second.
Call the roll.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
C, wave second reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-four for no parking on Hancock. Drive from South Jackson Street East to Corporal Rogers Sneddon Drive, chapter sixty-nine, section sixty-nine point zero eight three eight.
Move.
Second.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Third reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-four for no parking on Hancock Drive from South Jackson Street East to Corporal Rogers Sneddon Drive, chapter sixty-nine, section sixty-nine point zero eight three eight.
Still move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Hens?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Move to a dot.
Second.
Byrd?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Okay, E, second reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-five to change how fees are set for reconnection and to allow it to be done by resolution, chapter ninety-two, section ninety-two point one one.
So move.
Second. Call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Steins?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
F, first reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-six to change the speed limit on Corporal Rogers Sneddon Drive, chapter sixty-three, section sixty-three point zero four.
Still move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes. G, first reading ordinance twenty-two ninety-seven designating the Southwest Multifamily Residential Urban Revitalization Area of the city of Boone, Iowa.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Uh, number eight, I have no comments. Number nine, any council comments this evening?
I just have one brief comment. I met with uh. Mike Cornelius of the Parks Department. One of the uh board of uh school board members reached out to me and wondered if the city would be interested in relocating some of the playground equipment. From Page and Limpin'. Um, Mike and I went out and took a look at it. We took some pictures. Um, there's three or four pieces of equipment that. Had a distinct possibility. He's contacting. Um, uh, a company that does that for a living, relocates the equipment and then recertifies it. Uh, under the new safety standards. Um, to find out what those price uh pricing may be. We, I went, I attended the park commission meeting and brought that up to them. Um. Loot warm reception, Amy uh Amy Landis, who chairs that committee. Um, was all for it, so they're gonna do some more research on it. I'm kind of out of it now. Um, but uh I talked to Jeremy Pritchard, he was on board with that and uh so I think they're gonna move forward with that and I. I didn't speak for the city, but I said from a personal standpoint, if they could recoup two hundred thousand dollars worth of playground equipment. The city would probably help them in that endeavor, so.
I have a comment on on, I'm not going to go into details, um, but I did attend that Main Street Conference in Sioux City in August and it was three days. Um, it was very worthwhile, so I encourage anyone uh in the future to go. Um, because they really talk about.[1717.01] how to pull off revitalizing your downtown area, um, also sources of grants, funding, those kinds of things. Um, it was started off by the governor, um, leading the session. So, she's very involved in all this also. Um, so it was really a valuable conference. I got a lot of good ideas.
Any other council comments?
I'd love to see that blind replaced by number five.
Guaranteed.
Thank you, sir.
Guaranteed.
Thank you. Speaking of the decommission of Page and Lincoln, in conversations with the, uh, school district at all on their future plans for that.
Thinking on something, hope to have some.
No, they've directed Superintendent Treppa to look at some options.
We are working on it, absolutely.
Do know that there are folks in my neighborhood that are really worried about the lost Page Park, um, as a local area to go. You know, I mean, not that they shouldn't hear that demo. I'm just saying in general.
School has to take the first step.
Yep.
They're doing.
I just want to be.
And we are partnering with them and working with them along with Ames EDC. We hope to have something to you soon.
Some of that equipment won't meet current safety standards, so it'll just be demoed, but some of it's in pretty good shape. You seem to be in a dumpster.
Any other council comments? Any public comments for items not on the agenda? Yes.
My name is, uh, Faith O'Fallon. My husband, Kevin Doyle. And we're new to Boone. We moved here last year in August. From Miami.
Welcome to Boone.
I purchased a home, uh, one oh-three State Street. I am two blocks south of County Courthouse. Um, I have, um, spent a lot of money fixing up my home and, uh, long before this past July, we got X amount, four to six inches of rain in a short period of time. I was in Massachusetts at the time. Um, my basement built up with concrete. About my parents. Um, uh, who, Andrew came out or who died into my two floor drains in the basement and said, yep, it was raw sewage. My problem is that, um, I have lived in other small communities before and had city sewer and water. Also, rental homes, real homes with basements. Never in my life that I ever had problems with raw sewage coming in. So, my problem to you folks is that obviously you have a problem with your sewage treatment plant. And, um, and granted, I was told that, um, getting, uh, three to four inches of rain in a short period of time is not normal. But I did find out from my neighbor that my place prior to my buying it has had sewage in the basement before. So, um, I was just wondering, is there any grant money or anything available? I was told, um, um, actually by Mr. Andrews that I'm going to need to dig up my sewer line and I think it's six feet deep and put in a back.
Move.
Low valve. So, um, is there any kind of grant money or anything? I know, I'm not asking for a lot, but, um, I'm new to the community. I pay my taxes and I pay every month my water and sewer bill and I was just wondering if anything available else. Now, now I can leave. Everything in the basement was moved. I threw, I had to throw out everything. So, now I'm afraid to leave for a couple of days in case there's a rain or something. But I, I need help.
Sorry that happened to you.
Has the INI project been done up in that neighborhood?
This conversation started, I, I can't remember when, when the phone call. When the phone, phone call first came in, uh, they, they'd already reached out to quite a few, um, professionals that everybody had their opinion on it. The opinion was that they were tied to the storm sewer and the storm sewers were backing up because the streets were flooding back there. So, I, I met them at their house and I dumped the blue dye down there to prove to them that it went to the sanitary sewer. It does run to a ten inch sanitary sewer, twelve inch that ties into a trunk line. Um, just west of West Second McPherson, a couple of blocks. So, to answer Terry's question, this is the first house outside of the first zone that we've done. So, they're right on the area. Um, when we get to phase six of the INI plan, I was going to approach council with their directives of where you wanted me to work, keep working in the southeast corner or over in that west southwest section. Um, again, we're, we're still seeing high volumes of spike rain when we get to two, three, seven inch rains. Um, still looking for that aha indicator. Um, I met them at their house. I gave them the options where they could put their backwater valve in the basement. Um, or in the yard. It looked to me, I explained the benefits of having it in the yard when you have pressure, you have a pipe failure because of your pressure and everything, it's best to have that outside your basement. That's just, that's my opinion. That's what I would say. Um, where they were at, they weren't at extreme depth. Six feet is pretty basic. Their front yard is wide open, no trees. Their water service goes complete different direction. It, it's basically dig, put it in and, and go away. Um, that's, that's where my recommendation came in to put it in the yard. Um, I gave, I did give her the option, I told her and I gave her some names of plumbers that do the work. Um, I'll look for, you know, in the future, probably council's direction of which direction we want to go for INI, uh, phase six, but this is right outside of that. It's been on my radar, honey.
Uh, is there a grant program for backfill preventer?
There was, yeah, there, I believe it's two-hundred fifty dollars now. Um, but it, it's in the same program that the PPP, uh, personal, and I did explain that to her.
And they get the application from Dave at building office.
So, there is a little bit of money.
I use my, uh, garbage disposal thing incorrectly. And, uh, my first month at my house and it cost me four hundred dollars for two hours for a local contractor to come and fix my sign. So, you guys have a two-hundred fifty dollar grant. That's not going to cover very much. Never mind.
Thousands, couple thousands do that. That yard, you know, rent a machine.
Yeah, I think unfortunately that's the only grant that we have available at this time. Uh, the utility committee, we had a, an apartment building out on South Story and, and how deep was that out there, Waylon, that?
Eleven.
You know, twelve foot deep out there was a lot bigger project. It was thirty thousand dollars. Um, you know, but they were able to split it amongst them. Uh, my parents have had, there has their, had to have theirs fixed. Um, I've had to have mine fixed up on the north side of town. It just, uh, it's, like they said, all these homes are very, very old and the stuff that they use back then wasn't like they use now. It's just part of normal maintenance on your home.
Well, first of all, it's not from the eight, or it's nineteen seventy-six. But my problem is that your sewage treatment.
Oh, no, I don't think that's that part. It's, so, when he's talking about the INI program that's in point of infiltration. So, there's, uh, people have their sumps that are connected to the, the sanitary sewer and they're not supposed to. And so, what happens? It gets overwhelmed and it backs up into your basement. And so, the II program goes through area by area. Um, and makes a hundred percent sure that's not going into the sanitary sewer so that it just does not happen. Because there should be no, uh, stormwater in sanitary sewer. And so, uh, I'm really, really sorry that this did happen to you, um, and for the past, how many years? Five years now?
On phase five.
On five, we've been trying to tackle this area by area, but I understand that doesn't help you in your present situation. I.
If somebody's with me, how often do we get X amount of pieces in short period of time? My problem is that this has happened to this house before.
I understand.
So, and, and I was, you know, but I wasn't, I wasn't living there, so that's just all hearsay.
I understand.
If it happened to me, then I'm assuming that that guy was telling the truth when sewage.
Well, the INI project has alleviated a lot of this problem.
A lot.
Over the city. It just, unfortunately, your section hasn't been done yet. Um, but that should take care of that problem.
I will.
We're processing a lot of clear water right now. Um, everybody's sumps dumping in, but building tile, the whole nine yards. We've spent quite a bit of money over the past four years trying to abate this problem. So. Sorry, but.
Poor systems.
It's not much consolation, I understand, but.
Is there any other comments for items not on the agenda?